Good morning and welcome to the April 23rd, 2020 Business Meeting. And we'll start off as the County Administrator, our outstanding County Administrator, to please call the roll, Gary Schmidt.
Thank you Chair Bernard. First, our staff support today, Kevin Moss, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, Roll Call, Commissioner Humberson.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
We have no flag, so we're going to use our flags, though.
Oh, okay. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States.
... and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm standing at a virtual flag, so. We're holding this meeting virtually. If you join us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. We'll have an option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send a comment to be read during the Citizen Communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it at any time during the meeting by email to clacko news at clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area where you are, where you live, I guess. Also, today is often a great day. It's Bring Your Child to Work Day. Well, we can't do that. And my understanding is that many of the, our employees' kids are watching this via, 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 whatever, virtually at home, and that some of the employees are going to take photos, selfies with their kids at their desks. So we look forward to seeing that, and we will share that with the audience sometime in the near future. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary to introduce the subjects.
Thank you Chair Bernard. So we begin, as always, with COVID-19 updates. We'll start with Nancy Bush, who is the Director of Disaster Management and the Incident Commander for our Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead Nancy.
Okay, thank you, and good morning, everyone. So I do have our numbers for today. I am going to say that I will not be reporting negatives today because that was all still pending on the website, so I do not have that data. But for Oregon, for the positives, we have 2,059 with 78 deaths that are statewide. Clackamas County has 183 positives, which is up 10 from yesterday. And we have five deaths. Multnomah County has 566 positives and 29 deaths. Washington County has 425 positives and 10 deaths. And statewide, we are starting to see, you know, the slide down for the number of positives per day. So that is encouraging. Here at Clackamas County, we've kind of plateaued at, you know, seeing around 10 a day. And hopefully that will, we all start seeing our hump come down a little bit as well. There are 488 that are now hospitalized that are COVID positives. So there were some new testing guidelines that just came out this week from the Governor's Office, and I just wanted to read three of the things that are the most significant changes. First is resident staff, children or others in a care facility or group living setting, including asymptomatic people, when clinical laboratories have sufficient testing capacity, are now encouraged. Essential frontline service workers who display symptoms, who have regular contact with large numbers of people. So of course, that's going to be anyone that is on the front line, which includes emergency operations staff, firefighters, law enforcement, and so that is now being more encouraged. People from communities of color and the disability community who display symptoms because of higher risk for COVID-19 and associated complications due to long-lasting social and health equities. So those are the new guidelines. We're working with our health officer to, you know, make sure that we're communicating correctly what the intent of what those new changes are. And of course, we're going to see an increase in testing because of the new guidelines. So we want everyone to be aware of that, which means, you know, we could be seeing just, you know, a raise in some of the positives that we, more than we have may have seen in the past. Also, I just wanted to let everyone know, too, that we're going to get some ads out into several of our communities through the newspapers, and we're going to have an information sheet in there. And on one side, it will be in English of who they can contact as for, you know, mental health issues, health issues, health questions, those types of things. And on the other side, it will be in Spanish. And that will be going out hopefully next week, but it may be the week following. We're working with the media groups to get that out. And that is my high-level update, if there are any questions.
I have a question. Maybe it's more of a comment than a question, but, you know, I think Clackamas County and the metro region has done a really good job flattening the curve. And, you know, people are getting kind of anxious to get out, open their businesses or whatever. The fact that we're getting an average of 10 a day, and it's not going down, is, is, in my opinion, and my guess is yours, is not, doesn't tell us that the problem's over. The problem, we've been successful, is what it's telling us. But if we change direction now, that could climb. And the other factors that we haven't been doing the testing, I should say, nobody has been doing significant testing to identify those who may be infected with COVID-19. So, you know, I'm not getting a lot of pressure, but I know certain communities are. And can you kind of describe to me the risk in opening up too soon?
So, yeah, to the best of my ability. And, you know, a lot of things, you know, I especially look at historic data, which is 1918, and some of the things that happened there. But yes, you're correct. I mean, what is happening is we're seeing that, you know, having the social distancing and closing things down is working, because we are seeing that, you know, it come down and we humped, we didn't spike. And that continues to work. If you start sending, you know, like if we just opened everything up at one time, for example, you're going to see that climb up again, because obviously, this is something that's communicable. And the more people you have in stores or restaurants, if you're not practicing that social distancing, the chances are, we're going to see the numbers start climbing again. And that is what history tells us, and that is what the science is telling us. So, you know, one of the things that we're really looking at, and I know all the Commissioners know, is, you know, how do we reopen, and how do we start that recovery effort carefully and very deliberately? And having those conversations and to help to make sure that we don't have that continued climb or another climb again.
Are you having those conversations?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. And we, yes. And there's, there are going to be, we are working on some recommendations that we'll be giving to Commissioner Schmidt, I mean, I'm sorry, Administrator Schmidt, so that we can start having more in-depth conversations about how that's going to happen. And that's happening in the next few days.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner Fisher, and then Commissioner Savis.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, thank you. So Nancy, I'm wondering, we have a urban rural county, which we all know, and I understand that migrant labor will, is needed to help with some of the fields. And I'm just curious what we are specifically doing in Clackamas County to protect and create safety for those populations.
Yeah, that's a very good question. And we actually have a liaison group, and the migrant workers is one of the groups that we're working with to make sure that they're getting information, that, you know, if we can, we're providing them with some safety measures to help them, which includes like bandanas, to make sure that they have something for their face covering, and some other things that, that they may need, that they were able to get in other places that they're not able to get now, which includes food. So we're working on that, not only with that group, with other groups, too, that are underserved in our communities, and trying to make sure that that equity is there and as best we can provide for them.
Okay, Commissioner Savis.
Nancy, I appreciate all the hard work you're doing. With regard to the daily reports, whether it's the reports that you produce, or whether it's reports from the OHA, which I've been monitoring pretty intensely, I've been seeing actually an average here, if you look back a week ago, probably that Clackamas County was averaging about six cases, five, six cases a day. And in the last few days, I've seen a couple 10s, a five, and so on. So I think it would be a good idea, I don't know if we have that, but if we could just, from the beginning of this, when it was being recorded, if we could just see those stats collectively across the span by day, so we can actually see that number for Clackamas County. I'm certainly seeing Multnomah County's numbers, it looks like they're starting to flatten, but they're significant numbers. I mean, they're about 20, averaging over 20 a day. But I think yesterday was 20 exactly, but they had a new cases. But I'm trying to gauge that with the amount of testing, so if we can get a testing ability, because as we expand our testing, we're going to see more cases, more positive cases, which means that the numbers we're seeing aren't really real. I've been doing a lot of research, and of course, Georgia is really playing itself out pretty good as far as opening, reopening jurisdictional battles as to who's got authority to declare what between the mayors, counties, and so forth. So that's going to be an interesting one to watch currently, because every level of government seems to be involved in how that's playing out with all the pressure to reopen. But I found it interesting yesterday, well, I won't even go, my phone just blicked out my page, so I'm going to have to find it again. So I'm not going to talk about that. But I did want to get back to Deschutes County, for example, other counties in the state. I haven't, I'm going to make some phone calls today. I've done a little bit of that, but not enough. But how we operate as a commission, as a county, under the emergency order, it seems as though, if I'm not mistaken, let me just ask this question, sorry for the in and out. I understand your office is quieted down a little bit, right? So there, you know, I think the peak of the rush of issues before the EOC is, has tapered off a little bit. Is that correct?
So it has tapered off in certain areas. So public information, for example, was very, very high at first, an extremely stressful situation to be in. But now we have shifted, we have a lot of work that's going on still with our logistics section. We have, like today, we have 14 orders so far, and getting out PPE. So that continues to work at a pretty high rate. In our operations section, which we have, where we're working with the underserved communities, including the houseless migrant workers, that is still very intense. That work is still very intense in moving forward. And the other part is the planning group that's here that works with us to do the CISTAS, is that has slowed down. However, our advanced planning group is working some overtime, which is mostly people on my staff, to try to make sure we get everything to Administrator Schmidt in time, so we can get some other conversations going. So it depends on what part. Yes, some things have slowed down, and some things have picked up.
Right. It just, it just seems that other counties are, seem to be, have a lot more discussions amongst the Board of County Commissioners, or as far as reopening, and that's what I'm gleaning so far. And it seems that we're a bit, a little more detached, and it just seems that maybe we ought to be looking at the level of emergency, and whether it's level one, two, or three, to tier that, basically. I really, I think we've all learned a lot about how our ordinance and how the EOC may be, and how the relationship works with the BCC. But I'm really, I really think the discussion about reopening has to be more engaged with the Board of County Commissioners, as well as what all you, I mean, all the expertise that staff offers. I mean, I don't want to diminish that, the importance of that whatsoever.
Right.
I think it was very responsible for the Board of County Commissioners to take the level to declare the emergency as early as we did. And our numbers have showed benefit to our constituency for doing that. But I think the reopening is a much broader discussion, a far more complicated discussion. And Martha and I participated in a, in a community meeting last evening, and there were some very good ideas brought up, concerns brought up. So I think this reopening thing, we've got a, we ought to be doing what other counties are doing. It has to be more engaged as a commission, as far as what becomes, what comes before us and how we, how we tailor this. Because it's very evident that if we're talking about reopening anything whatsoever, that it's an indication that things are tapering. And I think that the Board should be working as a Board more so than it is currently.
Hi. Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, basically, during Commissioner Communication today, I, my previous meeting right now was the Regional Solutions. And GPI yesterday, as well as Regional Solutions, we're getting updates on the, from the Governor's Office about, they're calling it reopen, the reopening Oregon plan. So there are templates out there, and I'll talk a little bit more about that during Commissioner Communication. So maybe Paul, you and I should just chat. Okay.
So, you know, it is true. You've seen one county, you've seen one county. Washington County's ordinances are quite different than Clackamas County. But I agree, we will have to figure out a time where all of us can do this, along with our health professionals, and Nancy, and other people who are talking about this, and figure out how to do this. But in the end, it's the data that will tell us what to do. But, yeah, I have cities that are considering reopening, and they want to be part of the discussion, and they're rural cities. So there is a difference. And, but, the truth is, is that the, most of our rural cities, most of those people go to Portland to go to work. Now, there is no work right now in Portland, so they probably won't be going anywhere until those businesses open. But Gary, let's try and figure out a way, and it might be not doing a listening session, but doing something like this, and let people listen to our discussion when we're ready. And that might be next week, if Nancy and Gary get that information together. We could do this, have this discussion next week. Because I think we have to wait till the 4th, at least. All right, so let's move on.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Humberson, then Commissioner Savis had one more comment.
I just wanted to make the point that as far as I'm concerned, any decision we make on reopening will go through the lens of EOC and our physician. And quite frankly, the political aspect of it is going to be pretty far down the totem pole for me. This is people's lives, as far as I'm concerned. And we have experts that can advise us, that's Nancy and our physician, and that's the judgment that I think we should be relying on. We are generalists, we're not experts in this. And I don't care what they're doing in Deschutes County or anyplace else. I want to be sure that we do it right in Clackamas County, and that the professionals that understand this kind of thing are the, is the advice that we follow.
Paul.
Just to clarify, no one's suggesting otherwise. All I'm saying is the Board ought to be more engaged in that discussion, especially when we talk about what Commissioner Bernard just said, that the cities are putting pressure on it. For example, I want to bring up contact tracing. If, I understand it's happening, but we don't know where these incidences are happening in Clackamas County, where these people are striking that. And I also want to say that there's people in Portland, that live in Portland, that commute into Clackamas County, even in the rural areas, okay, that work in rural Clackamas County, but live in Portland. So we've got this back and forth going on. But if we don't know, if the mayor of a certain city thinks that they're ready to open because they're rural, and let's just say they have five cases or 20 cases, or they're seeing a spike in their area, how does, how does anyone know that if the, if the information's not out there? I'm not saying that it has to be specific to anyone's privacy, or has to invade HIPAA requirements or anything, but there could be at least a geographical mapping of approximately where those are. And, and that advice consisted with what Mr. Humberson just stated, is that that advice, and that expertise, and that knowledge has to be part of the equation. It must be part of the equation.
Anyway, HIPAA is something that we're following very closely, and it does not allow us to do that, as far as I know. Right Nancy?
That is correct. We are trying to figure out how we can do some better mapping, but it's going to be really broad because of HIPAA regulations and protection of privacy.
Maybe we just draw a map, urban, rural.
That's almost what it might look like, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? We'll move on to Gary.
All right. Thank you Nancy. Next Commissioners, under the emergency declaration for COVID-19, I did approve a contract on your behalf yesterday. Chair Bernard was not available, so I approved it. I did email you that as soon as I did it. And today, for the record, I want to state what that was. It was a contract for Health, Housing and Human Services, and approval of Amendment Number Eight to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as a local public health authority for Clackamas County. This is an extension of an existing intergovernmental agreement between the county and the Oregon Health Authority for the acceptance of $217,535,000 from the state for purposes of public health services related to COVID-19 at Clackamas County. So I did sign that on your behalf yesterday. I'm bringing it forward for you today for ratification. So I believe I would ask for a motion and a second for you to formally approve the action I took yesterday.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and ratify the decision made by Administrator Schmidt on behalf of the Board.
I'll second.
It's been moved and second to ratify the signing of an IGA with the State of Oregon and accepting $217,535. Any further discussion? I don't know why we would want this money.
Check or cut.
Will you please poll us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Humberson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Bernard.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next.
Thank you Commissioners. Next, Laura Zettner, the Director of Business and Community Services, has a proposal for you about potentially reopening the Stone Creek Golf Course, which is a county-owned facility. And she would like to explain her rationale and seek your direction on that request. So Laura, please go ahead.
Good morning Administrator Schmidt and Commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Laura Zettner, Director of Business and Community Services. Thank you very much for having me here today. As you're aware, we made the decision to close the golf course on March 17. This was done out of an abundance of caution to ensure the safety of staff and patrons due to COVID-19 pandemic, and also based on recommendations from state and county officials. This closure has given Total Golf Management, the operator of the golf course, time to reach out to other PGA professionals to determine procedures and processes that would be necessary to safely open the golf course. Total Golf Management has detailed written procedures, and so based on that, I am recommending for your consideration that we open Stone Creek Golf Course on May 1st, 2020, around, with the following parameters. Operations would only include golf, the driving range, and the carts. The buildings would remain closed, including the pro shop, the event center, and food and beverage. All operations would adhere to state and county guidelines regarding social distancing and sanitization. All payments for services would be online in order to minimize touchpoints. And I just want to mention, Gordon Tolbert, the owner of Total Golf Management, has been in communication again with the golf community. And apparently, the, I wanted to note that the, all the City of Portland golf courses are open, Eastmoreland, Heron Lakes, Glendover, Rose City, Redtail Golf Course, in addition, Langdon Farms, Oregon City Golf Club, The Reserve, and Quell Valley. So many, many golf courses are open, and they're able to do this in a safe manner, again, adhering to all the guidelines that have been put in place. I do have a list of each area and kind of what we're doing to minimize the risk and ensure the safety of our patrons and our staff. If you'd like me to go through that, I can, or I can open it up for questions.
So Nancy, are we okay with that? I mean, we talked about this yesterday. Do you see an issue? Mike.
I got video and forgot the mic. I did, I looked over what Laura had presented, and I actually did look into some of the other things, which she was just mentioning, that, you know, other golf courses being open, which I think have been open for a bit. And what they are proposing is safe, as long as we have social distancing. I would recommend, you know, that staff are wearing at least the mask. And I would also suggest that, you know, we recommend, you know, at least whenever patrons coming in, they're wearing masks whenever they're getting the golf carts and those types of things. But I don't see anything that would keep us from opening the golf course at this time.
The only concern I had was one person for a golf cart. And I wondered if maybe they could say, buy one, get one free or half price. And, but I think the social distancing that, you know, I'm a golfer, and it is very, I mean, if we could all golf, great, we wouldn't have an issue. But we're all over the place. And, but the golf cart is a spot where you are sitting next to someone. So that would be my only issue. I did talk to the tri-chairs last night. None of them really own golf courses, but some live by them. And the only thing that Washington County has is a frisbee course. And that's different because you're using an item that you can transport. So, questions?
Commissioner Savis, Commissioner Humberson, then Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have per se an issue with the golf course opening, per se. But it's a greater question about opening. And I don't know what's driving it. Maybe Laura can respond to that after I make my comment and share my concern. What's driving us to do this? You know, we are positioned to lead by example. And my concern is that, what I hear more, most frequently, which I can't really, I can't look straight-faced at anyone and explain to people why they can't launch their boat and go fishing, okay, out of park, okay? I can't straight-face and look at someone and say, we closed our parks to fishing, and whether that's even a family who lives in the same home, who goes fishing with one or two people, and yet we're going to allow this. It doesn't seem that it's equitable. And I think that we need to be politically, logically, medically, have to have a consistent method in which we reopen our businesses and counties. And I'm very concerned that we are not really respecting the protocols that, that, or can explain that. Why, why? I mean, we, that's the big question. How do we explain the why? It just doesn't seem to be fair. And I don't know how, I don't know how we're going to deal with that. I just, I just think it's, again, I don't have an issue with, with... with Stone Creek Golf Course opening per se. It is the greater question of how we do it in the most equitable, reasonable, and safe manner.
Milwaukee's launch is open, isn't it?
Yeah, I did want to note that, so North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District does have two launches, Milwaukee Bay and then I believe it's Oak Grove. They are both open. The only reason that the county park boat, boat launches, and we have several in county parks, are closed is because in order to get to the launch, you have to come through the gates and through our parks, which are closed. All the camping is closed, and of course, the restrooms. And so it's difficult to partially open to allow the boat ramp, the people who want to access the boat ramp. But again, there are a couple ramps open at, in North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District.
So Ken, you're next.
Just a question. I heard what Nancy had to say. By any chance, were the conditions of operation run by our doctor?
I have sent those to her, but I have not heard back from her yet.
I'd be interested in her take on it, and assuming, but assuming she's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Martha?
Well, I'm going to disagree. I think it should remain closed, because there's no way you're not going to have cross-contamination on golf carts. And the news today, okay, my dog, oh, at least it's at my dogs this time, okay? Whatever. And Fauci says, you know, says that the virus, we don't make the timeline. The virus makes the timeline. I just don't see why we would risk, I don't care what anybody else is doing. I just think that, I agree with Paul.
We could eliminate the golf cart rental if, if that would make it.
Well, that's, that's where the disease is going to get spread. I imagine they socially distance, but there's going to be cross-contamination all over the place.
So on the golf carts, just so everybody's aware, on the golf carts, we have, the requirements would be one rider per cart. And that's even if you come with a, say you came with your spouse. We are still going to require that there's only one. And there will be a monitor on the golf course that will be making sure that that does happen. And again, if you choose, you guys could tell us we can open, but take out the golf carts, because then we would just do the range and the course.
Well, are you going to have staff there with gloves and a masti, you know, kind of wiping down the golf ports?
Oh, yeah. So the golf carts would be sanitized before and after every single use. The keys would be sanitized, and we would have staff. We have Gordy Tolbert just ordered, he told me, like, I think, 1,000 masks that will be available for his staff and patrons. So again, we are taking every precaution that we can.
Well, we got to get through this. We got more business ahead, so.
Hey, I have one more question though, Jim. Is Eagle Landing open?
You know, I actually do not know the answer to that, but I can find out and get back to you on that. Thank you.
Your Chair, Commissioner Savis, had one more thing.
So Laura, I still haven't heard the reason why the push to open this. So if you could explain that, but I just want to just kind of echo the concern that Martha's made. And I guess my issue is, I'll just add to this a little bit. We are spelling out criteria, government, for businesses to open. There'll be, there'll be X amount of PP, there'll be testing for the employees, there'll be all these, all this criteria. So are we holding ourselves at that same level of criteria? And it doesn't, it doesn't appear that we ordered 1,000. That, that doesn't mean we have 1,000. It means we ordered 1,000.
This, this is a golf course. Do you golf, Paul?
Rarely.
It is, social distancing is the game. It's not the same as opening a restaurant. And it's not the same. Anyway, the, the reason is financial, frankly. And it's a great golf course, and people need exercise. Ken runs it every day. The path is open.
Well, the reason businesses want to open is financial as well. It's their livelihood. It's their lives.
Right, but it's not a closed area either. So let's make a decision on this or spend the day talking about it. What do you want to do?
Gary, Commissioner Schmidt, Mr. Chair.
Yes, first Eagle Landing is open. I got confirmation on that by text. I propose, commissioners, we hold this till Tuesday so that Nancy can hear from Sarah present, and then we can.
Okay. Great.
But Chair says no, so it's up to you, commissioners.
You know, I think that we, if the doctor says it's okay, then we are okay to do it. Otherwise, I mean, thumbs up it or, so I, I'm going to thumbs up it. That's three. If the doctor says it's okay, then we should open.
Based on the doctor, I agree. So it just seems, I mean, we, politically, justifiably, practically, it feels like a double standard.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Nope, she's good.
No. All right, let's move. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much.
Let's move on to the next item.
All right, we are done with our COVID-19 updates. Thank you, Nancy and Laura. Next is a public hearing, commissioners. This is a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Elizabeth Comfort, the interim finance director, will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, commissioners. I'd like to bring your attention to our staff agenda or staff report regarding the approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget. This is for changes of greater than 10% of the budget that was adopted June 30 of 2019. On the consent agenda, there is also a staff report for items that are less than 10%. But due to that this is greater than 10%, it requires the public hearing. Throughout the fiscal year, it's necessary to make changes when we have additional revenue or we need to reclassify funds from contingency up into an appropriated expenditure line. And that's what we have today. We have three different funds that we will look at realigning and then also adding new revenues that come in, that came in. And this is all in compliance with our Oregon Budget Law, ORS 294473. And this has also been noticed, according to Oregon Budget Law, in the Lake Oswego Review Newspaper on April 16. And I'd like to present this to you in combining the Exhibit A with the staff report. I know it's a little different than what we've done in the last two public hearings, but rather than reviewing the staff report and then the Exhibit A, I'll combine them so we're keeping the information together and relevant. The first one is disaster management. They are requesting transferring funds from the contingency for related costs of COVID-19. That amount out of contingency will reduce it by $227,000 and then increasing the expense allocated line of public safety and protection by the same amount of $227,000. The net change to that fund is zero. Secondly, we have for the Health, Housing and Human Services Administration Fund, they are doing some realignment. They are reducing their Health and Human Services expense line by $308,918. But they are increasing their special payments by $659,226, increasing that allocated appropriation. They're also reducing an inter-fund transfer by $60,000 and then reducing ultimately the contingency by $290,308 to balance those three other activities out for a net change of zero in that fund. The last one is in the Community Development Fund. And that one is recognizing additional funds that have come into the county from the City of Gladstone and the Clackamas County Children's Commission. So we want to recognize these dollars of $1,750,000 in the local government and other agencies' revenue line. Then we also want to equally increase the appropriation for Health and Human Services appropriation in the Community Development Fund by the same $1,750,000. So that is a net increase to the entire Clackamas County budget of $1,750,000. And I respectfully request that the commissioners review this for your adoption, your approval.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any clarifying questions?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Humberson?
Okay.
Just one, Mr. Chairman. And Elizabeth, I apologize for not giving you a heads up on this, but I was curious as to what, under Health, Housing and Human Services Administration Fund, are special payments?
They are payments will receive revenue from a particular grant or revenue source. And then it is actually going out to fund another special project or fund an organization with those same dollars. So they, the fund actually acts as a legal pass-through. And so we need to call those out separately in our appropriations and in our financial reporting.
I'd just be curious as to what some of those, what some of those services were. So at some point in the future, could somebody just email me what those are? I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. I've actually, we're doing an audit on those right now. I'm looking at the history for my own benefit, and I will share what I learn about the activity within our special payments throughout the county. And I would love to share that.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, well, we'll open the public hearing, and Dylan will moderate if anyone wishes to testify on this matter.
All right. Thank you, Chair Bernard. I'm Dylan Blaylock with Public and Government Affairs. I'll be coordinating both public comment for this specific public hearing and later on in a few minutes for general comments. If any attendees would like to provide a comment specific to this public hearing, the supplemental budget, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. Again, we'll open a public comment on anything in just several minutes. But a comment for this supplemental budget, raise hand. That's on the Zoom bar on the bottom or top of your device. We don't have anybody else on the phone, so I'll give people a few seconds to do that real quick. And I'll remind our audience that you can review our strategic plan, Performance Clackamas, at any time, which features five strategic priorities of the county, such as honor, utilize, promote, and invest our natural resources, just to name one. Chair Bernard, I do not see any comments.
All right, well, we'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Do we have a resolution number?
Commissioner Humberson, that will be put on there upon adoption of this.
I move, move to approve the resolution for Clackamas County Supplemental Budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Chair second.
Second.
All right, we'll assign that to Martha. It's been moved and seconded to approve a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and a budget reduction for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Any further discussion? All right, Kevin, please poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberson?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the consent agenda. Oops, excuse me, Gary. Next item is a consent.
The next item is a consent agenda. Chair, Kevin Moss.
Will you please read the consent agenda?
I would be happy to. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement Number 55207 with Lane County for online food handler's training testing project. Under Department of Transportation Development, approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Portland State University Institute for Sustainable Solutions. Under our Finance Department, approval, approving the submission of the Assessor's CAFSA grant application for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Approval of a resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget less than 10% and transfer for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Under our Juvenile Department, approval of Amendment Number Eight to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Multloma County for Assessment and Evaluation Program Beds for Youth. Under Technology Services, approval of Amendment Number One to a Service Level Agreement with Metro Area Joint Computer-Aided Dispatch System for the redundant route between Clackamas County 911 and Washington County 911. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of a resolution for North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Approval of a revised deed to transfer Village Green Park pursuant to the settlement agreement with the City of Pappy Valley. And underwater environment services, approval of a resolution for transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2019, 2020 for water environment services. And approval of a contract with NTA Contracting, Inc. for the last road sewer relay and asphalt pavement improvements. And that includes the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do any commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
To move and second that, we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Kevin, please poll us.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher? Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Gary?
Next is Citizen Communication. Dylan Blaylock from Public and Government Affairs will moderate.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Schmidt. And now is the time during the meeting. If any attendees would like to provide a general comment or pose a question related to any aspect of county business, you can do so now. Please utilize the raise hand feature on Zoom. Again, that's on the Zoom bar at the top or bottom, depending on your device. And we do not have anybody who is on the phone. So you can just go ahead and hit that if you want. I do have one email that has come in, which I will relay. If I see no comments right now, seeing none, we'll move to that. This one comes from William Christner in the Malala Dickey Prairie area. "Many residents are hurting financially because of the pandemic, and many seniors that own vehicles have been hit really hard. Another $30 out of our pockets at this time is a hardship for many. Has the board considered waiving the collection of the new vehicle road fee this year? Burdening them with another onerous tax at this point in time is just plain not right."
Well, that's a process that's done with ODOT, I mean, with DMV. I don't know that we, we would have the ability to withdraw that at this time. I know Paul just got his bill. I think you mentioned it the other day. I did too. But we, it's not, it's not a simple process. It took quite a while to get it to work. I mean, to negotiate with DMV to get it going. And it would be very difficult to withdraw it and add it back again.
Commissioner Savis, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I just have to add to that. Appreciate, Jim, you referencing our conversation. It used to be $43 per year. So one of my cars, last time I registered, was $86. So combined with the HB 2017 increase, apparently, and also our increase, mine is now $186. So it went up $100 for a two-year period, or $50 additional per year. So yeah, that's a pretty good hit. And you're, you know, it is collected by the state through DMV and ODOT.
All right, any other question?
Let me see. Again, if there's any other comments, go ahead and raise your hand. I do not see any chair, but I thought as long as it was Bring Your Child to Work Day, I would go ahead and lift mine up real quick. Here we go. This is, this is Fletcher.
Hi.
Fletcher. Hey, are you okay?
Hi, Fletcher.
Can you say, can you say Humberson?
I can't.
Can you say, can you say supplemental budget? Right there? Just go ahead and hear that.
Cutie pie.
And you can look right there. There we go. All right. Just thought we'd do that a little bit. I see no other comments, so go ahead.
Well, at least he has pants on.
Dylan, I appreciate you brightening our day with a young child. I mean, there's nothing that brightens my day more than seeing children, so thank you.
There we go. No problem. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm going to have to call my grandchildren after this.
Anything, anybody else?
No, Dylan was done.
No, that was it. That was it.
All right, so next up is County Administrator. All right, so next up is County Administrator Updates. Gary?
Yes, thank you Chair. Several good things happening in Clackamas County, would like to share with the board and the public. First, Transportation and Development, our Transportation Maintenance Division is starting two contract paving projects earlier than usual because of the lack of school traffic, because schools are temporarily closed. First is in the Oregon City Carver area. There is work to prepare five miles of paving on Clackamas River Drive, and that work started yesterday. In the Beaver Creek area, 18 miles will be repaved on four roads starting in May. Two of those roads, Harris and Ferguson, are among the first projects in the Community Road Fund suite of projects that will begin this spring. There was some recent media attention because of the projects. Our pamphlet papers gave the headline, "Transportation Projects Beginning Ahead of Schedule." And the story discussed how our Transportation Maintenance Division isn't resting on its laurels during this global pandemic outbreak. This is very indicative of how Clackamas County continues to operate and serve our public during this pandemic. Also, the county is saving $1.7 million in construction costs for two road projects. One of them is the Clackamas River Drive I just mentioned, and the second is the Highland Paving Project. And the reason we're saving $1.7 million is that the county was the successful bidder on those two projects, and there are very favorable market conditions right now. So thank you to our staff who are saving public dollars while doing this good work. Also, Transportation and Development shares that permit applications are up considerably from one year ago despite the pandemic and our offices being temporarily closed. So from March 2019 to March 2020, significant increase in permit requests, and our staff are continuing to meet those requests. Next, our Emergency Operations Center was notified by the Oregon Food Bank of a $100 contribution made to the food bank in honor of our Director of Disaster Management Nancy Bush and all the staff at the Emergency Operations Center. And the anonymous donor said they represent public service in action. So thank you to Nancy and our Emergency Operations Center staff. Public and Government Affairs received a note from a constituent named Susan about the board's virtual listening session and your town halls. Susan wrote, "Am I ever impressed with the first listening session by the county commissioners? My hope would be that after the pandemic is over, this will continue. As an older citizen, I find myself not wanting to get out and attend meetings. Doing meetings virtually have been a wonderful experience. Thank you for working for Clackamas County and making this available to all." So congratulations, commissioners and our staff for helping these, helping these meetings to run so seamlessly. Finally, commissioners, a reminder that next Thursday's business meeting, April 30th, will be an evening business meeting. You have agreed that the fifth Thursday of each month will be an evening business meeting, and next week is the fifth Thursday of the month. So April 30th will be an evening business meeting. It will be virtual, starting at 6:00 p.m. That is my update, commissioners, thank you.
Mr. Chair, you're on mute.
Yeah, I didn't want a dog barking. Next up is Martha. And you're on mute.
I'm on mute, but I have, I may have a barking dog here, but I'm gonna try and talk through it. Yeah, actually, there's been a lot going on virtually. Paul and I attended a meeting last night with one of our CPOs in the, you know, Oak Grove Oak Lodge. It was, it was done very well. I, I have to admit that it's easier for me. It was really nice to attend a meeting and not have to drive anywhere at night, but, so I'm, I'm all for continuing virtual opportunities as we move forward with this. Some of the news I have is I've attended virtual meetings with Greater Portland, Inc. as well as Regional Solutions. We meet every Thursday, that's why sometimes I'm a little late to the business meeting. They have, they start their meeting at nine in the morning, it goes to 10:30. Usually I drop out at some point, but I did learn some very interesting things today. At 10 o'clock today, Senator Courtney and Representative Kotek, Speaker of Kotek, are basically pushing forward $30 million of emergency funding. 12 million is going to go to shelter. 10 million is going to go to the Oregon Relief Fund, and that's something for folks that have not been able to qualify for unemployment at this point. 10 million will go to small business assistance, and 2 million will go to domestic violence. I don't have the details on how that's going to be dispersed and what the sidebars are, but I do think it's something we need to be aware of as a county to see if we can access any of those funds from our state. They're also looking for additional funding for hospitals. The other thing is that both GPI and, and today at Regional Solutions, they are starting to look, the governor is starting to look at reopening frameworks, and it is being called reopening, the reopening Oregon Plan, and we've had briefings on what that might look like. I'm waiting to get the, the slides so I can send them to the rest of you, because I think that will help us frame how we're gonna move forward. One of the things the governor is doing at this point is that she's pulling together industry sector work groups. That includes restaurants and food, retail, personal services, childcare, transit, and outdoor recreation. And basically, you can, you know, one of the things I just want to underscore is remember that Dr. Fauci, who is one of my heroes, I think he's probably a hero to all of us right now, says, "We don't make the timeline, the virus makes the timeline." So we always have to keep that in mind as we start to frame, you know, how we are going to reopen. So that, that work is actually, that work is actually ongoing, and I'm grateful I can be on those two work groups to get, you know, get some of the information out to everybody. The Oregon Employment Department gave an update, and they've had over 200,000 unemployment claims in the last five weeks. The first wave really had much to do with people who perhaps, it's a barking dog in the background. People who are, you know, retail and restaurants, things of that sort. Now they're seeing a surge in white collar industries, finance, manufacturing. Basically, one of the things they mentioned was that our north coast of the state is being the hardest hit at this point in time. So John LaGarza also, also attends those meetings, and he had, I wanted to get ahold of him and talk to him because, again, he started to ask questions about our ag community. So I appreciate Commissioner Fisher bringing that up, because I, I think that we need to be talking to the Farm Bureau, you know, directly to find out what's been going on with, with the labor issues for them. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher, you're up next.
Hey, thank you. What's been on my mind, and I'm sure it's been on the mind of my commissioners, is how do we open up our economy in a thoughtful and safe way? And so with, with the governor's approach based on science, and I think that is really, really important. And hold on just a second, I gotta tell Alexa to stop talking. Sorry about that, she was reminding me of something, I don't know what that was. Probably that it was my commissioner communication. So yesterday, when I was on the call with the governor and the business leaders, it really struck me, has Governor Brown just methodically answered every question, and how pragmatic and, but yet with compassion, she approaches this recovery. I am ever so troubled about the states that are not following the advice of the experts and are just opening up. And I'm concerned that this will affect the entire country, because we're just struggling to get our personal protective equipment. We have all this criteria that we need before we can really start functioning again as a fuller community. And I'm just very, very frustrated that there are those states out there. It's going to affect all of us. The, the way this virus exponentially expands so very quickly, it could very much so affect all of us. I hope it doesn't, and I hope we are just being extra cautious. I am very concerned about that, and really support our approach in how we are leaning at the science. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, I've been looking at some statistics, just building on what we've been talking about this morning, and I found that page back up on my phone. As of, and this is dated, but it's the latest, greatest information, but this is national numbers. As of April 7th, Oregon ranked 47th in the number of cases per capita. I know that the OHA website is just listing the number of cases per county on a daily basis and updated in total. And as of yesterday, there were only, there were four counties in Oregon that had zero cases. But I think it's probably more significant that if a county of a population of 50,000 people has 50 cases versus a county of the same population that has five cases, I think it kind of shows either a concentration or a reason for alarm. So there's a number of ways of looking at the statistics, and by numbers or by percentage. We ranked 14th lowest in the nation with the number of deaths per 100,000 people. So even though we were number 47th lowest, we were the 14th lowest when it came to a per capita. I don't know what that speaks to, but that's an interesting statistic. The other one, which is about the testing, we rank 21st lowest in our testing, which is 7.1 per 1,000 people, but our number of cases in another statistic on another page, which I can't open at this moment, shows that, that there's obviously a relationship to testing and recorded cases. So statistics and analysts analyzing all of this, it means something, it's indicative, but it's hard to really frame for a conversation like today. So just wanted to kind of point that out, that I think, you know, we are, as a state, we're doing a good job, and we have to recognize that, that the results are showing that we're doing a good job. And so how we open, open responsibly, and where we position ourselves economically will be a statistic that will come as well. So I think that'll be show in the long run, how well we manage that. And that's, that's yet to be determined, that's yet to be measured, but that's something that we need to be cognizant of, that to basically demonstrate that balance between responsible reopening and also managing the virus. I did want to say I'm looking forward to the listing session at 1:00 this afternoon. Commissioner Fisher and I will be part of the panel. Apparently, we'll have the Sheriff Roberts, and we'll have Deputy District Attorney John Wentworth, and I believe Judge Steele will be attending as well. And these are listing sessions, so I'm hoping that Dylan, if you're the person that's managing that today, and my colleague Commissioner Fisher, we can always remind our fellow panelists that it's not a town hall, it is a listing session. So being it's condensed into one hour, I really want to make sure we hear from people versus us kind of broadcasting, because an hour goes very fast. Martha and I were part of that meeting last night, a virtual meeting. By the way, the first CPO, Community Planning Organization, to hold a virtual Zoom meeting. So congratulations to Oak Grove Community Council for doing that, that's great. And it shows that we are, we want, we don't want to be, we don't want to be socially distancing, we want to be physically distancing, and we want to be socially connected. So I appreciate Commissioner Schrader, Vice Chair Schrader, pointing out that there's a, there's a distinction between physical distancing and social distancing. So the fact that we're connecting more this way, I think is a great, I guess that one caller or email that we got, giving us kudos for that, is an example of people appreciating us being out there in the community. So be safe, everyone, be healthy, and I look forward to us, the county commission, getting together and discussing how we are going to strategize in a, in the most equitable fairest way of reopening Clackamas County as this virus very, very, very slowly tapers down. And we're not there yet, we're only flattening, we haven't tapered down yet. Thank you.
Ken?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Martha and Sonia for their comments from the governor's broadcast yesterday. I won't repeat what you guys already said, but it was informative, I have to admit. The only thing I really have is two things. One is Commissioner Bernard and I will be at the Sheriff's Training Center boxing and passing out food later, later this afternoon, so we will miss your listening session, but we will try to catch it on YouTube or on a link with clackamas.us. The other thing is, is been in touch with a lot of the different, or hearing, I guess I would say, from a lot of the different senior centers and food banks, and a number of them are reaching out for some help. They can use either donations of food or clothing or money. I would encourage the people that are listening today and my colleagues, check with the food banks in your area, check with the senior centers in your area, and see if there's anything that you can do to help them out. Right now, there's a big draw on, on food in particular because of the situation that we're in, so anything that we can do to help those that are more shut in than the rest of us, let's make sure we do that.
Thanks. I had an opportunity to meet with my brothers and sisters' cocktail party. My brother in Boston, my sister in Crooked River Ranch, and actually, my, my wife in California. She's been stuck in California for four weeks almost now. She'll be heading home hopefully tomorrow, but it is a different world. I was mentioning the other day that I went to Eugene for the AOC conference and drove to Portland to the T2020 conference and back to Eugene all in one day, when this is obviously the way to go, or something like that. So I, I, I hope we continue to do this in some, at some level. Of course, right now, Zoom is free. I'm sure it's gonna get pretty expensive, it may get expensive after, you know, this crisis is over. But, you know, I haven't, I'm very proud of our, our staff at EOC that's working hard. Elizabeth in Finance, our tax assessor, we did meet, I did sort of meet with them yesterday in an EMT meeting, asked them about the question that we discussed yesterday, and, you know, people really do see the county how it is, it's challenging. And, but I think we're doing a great job. And we also had our candidates forum online, it was interesting. But, you know, I, there's some interesting characters running for commission, particularly the one against Martha. The thing is, that's important to realize, that this is a serious job. Martha, as, as you know, Paul and Ken and Sonia worked diligently to make sure that the county is on solid footing, and that we're addressing the issues and concerns that citizens have. And I would say one of the candidates who thought that we should be sovereign was a very different, hadn't thought through a lot. Example, how to reduce our energy usage, and that was buy energy efficient light bulbs. So it was, it was funny, but it was informative. So make sure, there's two important things. Your ballot, your voter's pamphlets in the mail, read about the candidates, vote when your ballot comes, and fill out the census. The census is very important. It will affect us for 10 years, and it's very important. Clackamas County, I mean, the state may get another representative in Congress if our population's big enough, and that's important. And it means millions or billions of dollars to the state of Oregon over time. So fill out your census. So fill out your census, stay safe, and take a picture of your kid at work, and we'll make sure that folks have an opportunity to see that. With that, we're adjourned.